Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We do have a forum, so we're going to start rocking and rolling here. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Shannon. Second, Jerry. Joe, would you like to talk about the notification of the appointment of the ESL teacher?
Yeah, just thank you, Donna. I would like to just say we had a mid-year resignation of ELL. And we were happy. We were really nervous going into this. You know, those are very difficult positions to find. This is a .75 position. This is part of the position, one of the positions that we put in the budget for next year to have it be a 1.0 because this is a position that's servicing all five of our schools, over 50 students. But for right now, it's a .75 for the remainder of this year, and we were able to get a really good candidate. We're really excited.
Great.
So Cindy Madera will be joining us, I think, at the end of this month. I believe she starts.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I believe it's last I heard it was like 50 or 51, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? Harry, none? All in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and up first is our Masic board reps. Girls, if you'd like to come on down.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So today I'll start off with the Masic Drama Department, and the Masic Drama Department will be showing a Wilders' Evening. And it will be streaming Tuesday, March 9th, and Wednesday, March 10th at 7:00 PM. And next I'll talk a little bit about Masic Robotics. We're continuing to conduct our season safely and progress with our season, hopefully getting some world qualifications this year. Next, Melanie will talk to you about sports.
This Saturday, the B Positive Club raised a whopping $600 at Terra Cafe to support childhood cancer research. And this past week, the girls' basketball team lost to Newtown, but had a triumphant win against both Notre Dame Fairfield and New Melford. And the girls' ice hockey team beat Hamden Co-op, but unfortunately lost against Sacred Heart West Haven. The boys' ice hockey team dropped both of their contests, and the boys' swimming team lost its only meet, sadly. But Color Guard continues to compete virtually, and the cheer and dance squads are showing their talents at halftime of home games. All teams, including indoor track and Unified Sports, are looking to get back into action this week. And now, Sujah.
The virtual school-wide assembly is taking place on Wednesday, March 3rd at 11:00 AM. This assembly will be interesting and inspiring, and all students must register to hear Magic Johnson, Tony Hawk, and David Dobrik. All students must register and attend through the link in their school email. And students will be entered for a chance to win a new Xbox Series X or a $500 Visa gift card. SAT School Day for juniors is on Wednesday, March 24th. Thank you.
It's 11:00 on Wednesday. Is there a way to go to it through your email? My phone's fully remote, and he was wondering.
11:30 AM. The link will be through students' school emails.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Does anybody else have reports this evening, Nick?
I attended the last Board of Finance meeting. It was a little bit of a quick one because they did one of those things where they stack like five meetings in a night, so it was only 20 or 25 minutes to have their regular meeting. And tomorrow afternoon, Joe and I and Dave will be attending our first joint Department of Finance committee meeting because there are several elected officials that are going to be there. Town Council, Board of Finance, and Board of Audit has been noticed as a FEPs subcommittee meeting of the town council. And that'll be 3:30 tomorrow, so I'm hoping for a comprehensive discussion.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else have committee reports this evening? All right. We will move on to public participation. I'll start here. Paul, is there anybody on the line? All right, there's nobody on the line. So Joe, you are up.
All right. Let me just, I just want to keep everyone apprised of, I'm just have one side, you don't want to go too far. Just want to keep everybody apprised of enrollment as we move into next year. I know this is probably one of the biggest drivers, one of our biggest concerns. We had kindergarten information night about two weeks ago, I believe. The portal to register your students into kindergarten had been open before that. We did have quite a few people who have registered already, but we've got a long ways to go. We get, you know, who have enrollments, you know, kind of trickling in from now until, obviously until the fall and into the summer. So I just wanted to kind of give you a quick overview of where we are this year and where we were as of, it's actually one week ago today, where our enrollments were. If you look at, this is Monroe. I just did this for the three elementary schools. The, if you look at where we are, this is where we are this year with Monroe Elementary. These are the number of sections and the section sizes. These are the projections for next year. If you look at this, the pre-K number is, the pre-K number is, that's, that one will not get really trued up until we get, we move into the summer. That number will grow significantly between now and then. We usually end up with between 40 and 52 kids, Darlene, yearly in pre-K. Kindergarten right now at Monroe is at 40 compared to the 49 that we have this year. The school that, I don't know if it's a housing thing or whatnot, but the school that is giving us the biggest challenge right now is Juan Hollow. We had 86 students in kindergarten this year, and we have 98 who have already registered for kindergarten next year. Now, if you look at this, we have a, we have some opportunities here, you know, if our numbers can stay somewhat in this area. And that's a big if. I'll keep you guys, I'll bring this up every month, and we'll keep track of where this goes. If you notice this year, we have two, we have kindergarten and one has sections of four in it, and then we have 5, 5, 5, 5 going through. So theoretically, if you want to think of it this way, one of these fives is going to come out. So we can recirculate them. As of right now, you can see we've projected by moving that after position to kindergarten already. So we don't have, we're not projecting with four sections with 98. That would be 25 kids per class. Right now, we've already moved that FTE into kindergarten to get us five sections at 20. But, you know, there's, obviously, there's pressure throughout there. So we will, we will continue to update this. I'll probably bring it back to you both every, you know, maybe the beginning of every month. I mean, the first meeting of every month. And then Stephanie, this trend is not too far off from, you know, where they, where they are this year. 62. Right now, they're at 53. So again, we have a long ways to go. We will get, we will get enrollments in over the summer. We'll get some people that move out of town, too. So, you know, we may get, you know, some withdrawals. But I just want to, you know, I will keep this group apprised of this. And I've already had, you know, preliminary conversation with Board of Finance about keeping them up to date on this as well in case, you know, anything needs to change before we go out to refer them. Any questions on this?
Yeah, so I know we had through, what we had through February, not February, January, you know, pickup for this year. Do we know what our February pickup was for students?
I could find that out. What's the February? How many students did we pick up in February?
Net. Because I know from September through January, it was 42. So I was wondering what the net is. Because I know I've seen a few people who said that they're new to Monroe.
Yeah.
And stuff, so I'm just curious.
All right. I will, I'll get that for you.
There was a whopping 11 houses for sale in Monroe last week, so there's not a lot of people leaving.
No. I know two people that, one just closed on a house today. They closed, they closed today and, you know, bought out of town. And another family, again, the houses, I don't think were on the market for days, maybe.
Yeah, someone just moved into my street, little kids. Literally, over the weekend, they moved in.
Wow.
Nick?
Joe, in a normal year, which this is not, obviously, but in a normal year, there usually is an increase. The kindergarten enrollments usually are up over the summer, even though if some students move out, there's a net increase, right?
Uh, yeah.
So it's just a matter of magnitude in whatever year you're, whatever year you're in, right?
Yes.
I mean, to Shannon's point, if, if there's no more, if there's no houses to buy, how many more people can come in? But I'm sure that that's also going to be changing as the spring and the summer comes along. So, yeah, definitely, definitely concerning. I think that what you did with the four and the five sections in Juan Hollow, you have to, because, I mean, even if you get another 10 to 15 students at Juan Hollow, that your kindergarten numbers are going to be, you know, 22, 23.
Yeah.
And, you know, you have 23 second grade, or even at Stephanie, 24 and, 24 average in the third grade. But I think 24 in third grade compared to 24 in K, it's worlds apart, so.
Shannon, or Jeff, this question is for you. When does usually the spring market of people putting houses on usually happen?
March or April. But March, if you're trying to get ahead of it, it's just that we're down approximately 60% in inventory from where we were last year at this time. So, yeah, I would imagine people are still going to, you know, people will put their houses on the market. We're still going to see activity. It's just, it's just, you know, a dynamic I've never seen before.
Right. And probably last summer probably wasn't a good indication because we had a net increase of 86 children during the summer. That was our net. But previous to that, what would we average as a pickup?
I'd have to go back. I'd have to go back and check it. Sheila, you don't happen in all that, do you?
I mean, but we probably want to look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Not, like I said, not last year because it was an 86, and that could have been skewed because of so many people moving in. But you want to probably see what the average is, just to kind of have some sort of guess to say, well, on average, we usually, let's say, pick up 50. I don't know what the number is. Then you can kind of gauge, you know, where we would probably be.
Yeah.
I think it's a little different here, too, because we open the kindergarten registration online in February. So our numbers are much higher at this time than they typically would be. Granted, we get a bunch after our kindergarten information night, which happens at the end of January, no, end of February. But there's still usually a lot of given stake in that number between then through the summer. But usually, the numbers are high right now. But I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that people can be registered online. They don't have to wait to come into the school to get the paperwork, to get it all started. So it'll be interesting to see how much more they go up.
Sure, you're right. I'm sure, Sheila, that's a factor as well. Also, a possible factor is people who last year, who might have been on the fence about sending or not, might have waited a year with the COVID thing. So we might have an increase or an uptick because of that. And just with everything going on, I, I just don't think it's like a normal year. Like, I don't think, looking at previous normal things are going to be a huge factor in what's going to be happening right now.
So I'll come back to this. If it changes dramatically in the next two weeks, I'll bring it back, you know, in two weeks. But if not, I'll bring it back to the first meeting of the month.
Thank you.
In April. Next up is Darlene with our, with our monthly special education enrollment and financial updates.
And of course, I left my board packet in my car, so I don't know what page it is. It is in your packet. Do you know the page number? Sorry.
26. 25 or 26.
25, 26. Thank you. Okay. So as far as enrollment is concerned, we had one new student register who came with an IEP. We had one student who was dismissed from services, and one student who was referred ineligible, which brings our total to 463. And then if you look at the financials, we have just one, one line that changed. I think I talked about this a little bit last month, or last week, the last two weeks, I presented the last month one. But the outside agencies, we do have, we are in a deficit there of $44,000. We had some program changes. This is annual review season. This is where we, we pick up all of those PBTs where, you know, people have, students have to have an annual review every single year. So there are some program changes. It just happens to hit outside agencies. So we have, but every other line is the same. One thing that I do want to point out is that as a whole, with all of my lines, that if you, if you consider that, we have some savings in like transportation for students who are not attending because of COVID. So right as of today, we, we still are in a good spot. We just may have to make some transfers between lines. The other thing that I wanted to let you know was that we filed today for excess costs. So we had, we had filed in December for $508,000. Today, we filed for about 580. The concern that we have about that is that, again, we're still in, we're still in COVID. Programs are still changing. Students are not participating fully because of COVID. So what we do with excess costs is we project for the rest of the school year. So if, if students do not come for whatever reasons, if transportation does not continue for whatever reason, those are things that would affect excess costs. As of today, when Tracy filed today, that's the number of what we would get back. The, the problem is, is that if we do not meet that number, because they true up in August, so if they do not meet that number, then they take that out of next year's, or out of the Exa, the, what is that one? The ECS?
ECS.
ECS, yes. So, so that, that's one of the things that we have to consider. But we, we put in, I think, in the budget, it's, it was 600 for this year for the excess costs, so we're just under that. Questions?
I just have a, and this might, this is a bit of a larger question, and it might be for, for Joe and Jack as well. But, you know, we've been hearing a lot recently in different parts of the country, but even in Connecticut, about, you know, social, emotional wellbeing of our students. And I think that Special Ed students, who are in Special Ed, even in non-COVID years, have specific programs, and there's more one-on-one time. But are we kind of, are we doing anything for our non-Special Ed students and checking in with them on not just academics, but also the social, emotional of kind of the whole population?
Yeah. I think our counselors have put in a great effort for social, emotional this year, and they're checking in with students, regular and Special Ed. You know, the Special Ed students, like you met, you said, they have program managers who do that on a regular basis. But we have counselors and, you know, people on staff. I think during COVID especially, we had everybody on board. So the, you know, the structural leaders were contacting students who were not, you know, showing up on camera or whatever, you know, and just checking in with kids to see how kids are doing, yes.
We made, we made, as we started this school year, social, emotional learning has been, you know, probably our biggest emphasis. We made our district goals around social, emotional learning. So every teacher in the district adopted a social, emotional learning goal to meet the needs of each child. And you see that in their individual lesson plan. A lot of teachers have done just a wonderful job, you know, with, you know, lesson plans that deal with resilience and, you know, mental health in, you know, age-appropriate ways and whatnot. I think, I know in a little bit, I'm going to talk a little bit about board professional development, but I think it would be a really good exercise to have some of our folks, maybe Anne O'Doy from the Guidance, and a few other key people who have really been, you know, who've really been behind SEL all year, come in and just give a little preview or overview of what's been, of what's been happening all year. I think it's a really good point, Nick. I think it would be a good, be really good information for everyone on this, on this board to have. Because it's been our, you know, knowing the social isolation that kids were experiencing for the last year, it has been really important. I mean, this, this, you know, pandemic has really provided really significant mental health challenges for everybody.
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that would be a good one.
Thank you, Darlene.
Thanks, Dar. The, I am, we have been consumed, Jack and I. As soon as I found out, I think it was not this past Sunday, but the Sunday before, I got an email from CAPS saying, hey, you have to get on a phone call tomorrow morning with DPA. CAPS is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent. You have to get on, you have to get on a phone call tomorrow with DPH. You know, this was all the superintendents in the state because they're going to talk about the vaccination rollout. And they basically said teachers are going to be eligible, you know, all school staff, teachers, paras, bus drivers, custodians, all school staff will be in this next round starting March 1st. I'm really excited. My, my excitement was tempered last week when the state was saying, you know, our goal is to get everybody their first dose by March 31st. It was still positive news, but, you know, I know people are starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it would be great to get them vaccinated as quickly as possible. I am extremely, extremely happy to report that we had 445 staff members as of when I left my office tonight that have registered for the vaccine. Like I said, teachers, paras, administrators, secretaries, custodians, bus drivers, food service, what have you. We learned, learned today that we have enough vaccines to cover everybody, so we can do a clinic. So all intentions are to do a clinic here at Masic on Wednesday. We've been preparing the logistics for it and get everybody their first, their first dose of the vaccine this Wednesday. It's a huge undertaking. I can't thank the emergency operations team, specifically Keith White, Nancy Brawl, Bill Holsworth, Ken Callog. They've, we've all met weekly, and, you know, they've been instrumental in getting this pulled off. So the only thing that, you know, the only thing that, you know, could slow us down a little bit is if, you know, like anything else, if some of our volunteers are unable. Right now, it's, it's fully staffed. We're prepared to distribute 445 vaccines to everybody that's, that's registered. If we have, you know, if we have a couple of callouts because some of the volunteers can't make it, we may have to push some people off to either the next day or, or the next week. I'm hoping we really don't have to do that. I did, we did have a sign up for, for people. They, and we told them that the number, the order that they signed up in, that's when they would be given the vaccine. Because it was, it was, we would have spent, we would have delayed the process if we tried to prioritize people because it was so hard to tell, you know, is it age? Is it a pre-existing condition? Which pre-existing conditions?
Right.
Is it the students you're working with? But hopefully, we are, you know, green light for Wednesday, and we get everybody in. Our biggest push now is, and again, I really want to thank Craig Hirsch, the human resources over at the town. He's uploaded our staff into the VAM system. I would say the large majority of people received their email from the CDC today, went in, registered through VAMs. It's kind of a bit of a tricky process for anyone who's been through it. It's not completely intuitive. But there have been a few glitches. We want to get everybody who has not registered in VAMs yet. They have to be registered in VAMs before they take the, before they're eligible to take the vaccine on Wednesday. So we want to make sure that that will be, that will be all done. So we're hoping to get everyone their first dose on Wednesday. We have the second dose already pre-scheduled for Thursday, April 1st. That was kind of strategically done, knowing that the, that's the day before Good Friday. So we would probably do like a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, week of school and have, have school. And then Thursday, do that. Just, I think most of the, you know, news out there with the second, if there's going to be a reaction, it's going to come after the second vaccine. And, you know, facing a staffing shortage of, you know, 30 or 40% would be a nightmare. Chair?
Joe, clarify for me again, the registration for VAMs. Are the staff members doing it?
So what happened was, so what happens is, and it was much easier for the staff, although there's, we're still working, Jack and I were working, and we were talking to Paul before about trying to get some IT help. You know, the, Craig uploaded all the names. All we had to, and I don't know why there's any snafus, but there just seems to be a few bugaboos in the, in the system. We had to upload their first name, last name, and an email address. And then Craig uploaded that into the system.
Right.
Then we got an email today from the CDC. You started a registration procedure. Then, as you were going through that, it, there was a piece where they then sent you another activation code. You put that in, you went through the registration process.
The staff received emails from the CDC telling them to.
Exactly.
Just so I know. Thank you.
And what they did is they went through the whole thing, all the way through the registration process. And then my direction to them was stop when you get to view portal or schedule a vaccination appointment. Because our, our clinic is not a public clinic. So if they went on schedule a vaccination appointment, they would, you know, they could see that they could get one on March 26th in Torrington or something like that, but they wouldn't see ours. And I told them, once you get to that point, you're done. You know, you've already, you have, you have a clinic, and it's, it's here. So we're really excited. You know, I think the next, you know, you know, logical question that I think people are starting to get is, you know, we want to try to get back to some sense of normalcy as soon as possible. If, if this timeline kind of works out, everyone would have their second vaccine by the first, I'd like to get back to school five days, you know, coming, coming back after the April vacation. I would suggest keeping Wednesdays a half-day because we're still going to have remote learners. We still have people trying to work on multiple platforms to get everybody going. But I'd like to get these kids in school five days a week. And I think, I think, you know, I think everyone would be much more comfortable with that once we're, once we're.
Thank you, guys, for getting all that put together and coordinated. I know that was not an easy feat or task, and I'm sure.
It's been a heavy, with a lot of people helping. It's.
Yeah, to everybody, thank you. I hope it's a big peace of mind for, for everybody.
Not every district, I think, is in this good a shape.
No, you know, I mean, again, all with, so much thanks to the emergency operations team for, for making this happen. I know there's some districts that they have, you know, some vaccines for some, for some people. I know of other districts that are just telling their staff, you know, just turn VAMs and go get an appointment, you know, go get an appointment. So we're trying to make this as convenient as possible for folks.
Just to make sure you understand what they said, though, there was a press release at four, Joe. There's only 100 school systems that have even tried to activate this, and there was only, according to the governor at four, there's only a handful that were ready to give the shot to the staff this week. So kudos. I mean, Shannon's right, Donna's right. This was big, Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
This was big. A lot of people were sitting back, and you guys.
You did it.
Thank God, didn't sit back.
You did it. Thank you.
I'll feel much better after Thursday, Wednesday.
So you know you're going to get either the Pfizer or the Moderna.
We're getting Moderna.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know Johnson &amp; Johnson one's coming out, coming to the state tomorrow, I believe.
Oh, yeah? The vaccines?
The vaccines, and that's the one-shot one.
The one-shot deal, yeah.
I don't know who's going to announce.
Yeah, as far as I know, well, yeah, we already have the vaccine, so it's, it's the Moderna vaccines.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great job, everybody.
Team effort.
Awesome.
I was just going to have Sheila. Sheila was really, she spearheads the Celebration of Reading program that we usually do every year in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday. So I was going to have Sheila just give us a quick update on the, on that celebration.
Can you do it in a rhyme?
I can try, can't I? Well, this year definitely proved the challenge with trying to do Celebration of Reading. I mean, many of you sitting around this table are readers for us. We have 186 readers on our distribution list. And to try and get in about 65 people to be able to read in our classrooms every year. And we're very fortunate to have Monroe's Rotary support us the last two years and looking to continue that support going forward with purchasing the books. Monroe's local bookstore, Turning the Page over on 25, Pia is just amazing. She gave us some beautiful book recommendations and helped the reading consultants and I kind of narrow it down, and then did her magic to get us these. kind of narrow it down and then did her magic to get us these books, which was great. And because we had to do it a little bit differently, we decided to go with in-person, in-staff to be able to do the readings because we were recording them. And we didn't want to put it out to our community members if they didn't know how to record it. And then how would I get it? And would it be compatible? So we decided to do it a little differently this year. So kindergarten has, as every year, every grade level has one book. And the same book is read in every single kindergarten classroom, same for first, second, and so on. The Rotary chose the first book called I Promise by LeBron James. And it's really the message of the Rotary with, I promise to do, you know, good things for myself and my community and my family. It's very much on that community piece. What can I do to make the world a better place and to give back? So the Monroe Rotary has, I don't know, I lost count with how many people read a page or two in the book. It's about two minutes. And they've also asked whether or not that could be read in every single classroom. So I've asked the teachers if, in all of our K through 5 classrooms, everybody can hear the two-minute story done by the Rotary about I Promise, because it really is a good message. In first grade, we have a book called Inside, Outside, Inside, which Mr. Ceccholini read for us. And that is actually about COVID. And it's about how we went from everybody being outside to now everybody being inside. And how you appreciate your family and the times that you've got together. And you appreciate the people who are on the outside, your first responders, your mail people, your grocery store people who helped us during this crazy time. And it's really a story of hope. And it's got a beautiful message to it. So Jack did that one for us. Second grade is, has a book called Eyes That Kiss in the Corners that Darlene read for us. And that is about an Asian child who is comparing the shape and color of her eyes to her classmates. And then comes back to realizing that her eyes match her mother's and her grandmother's. And they tell a story of their family. So it's again, a nice family story. Jen Parcell read our third grade book called The Proud is Blue. And it's about two sisters and one who's aging into the part where she'll wear a hijab to school and how other people approach her. And how her younger sister sees how other people approach her and feels very much she's sticking up for her sister. Why are these people not being nice to her? And why are they saying these things? And the mother's voice that says, the people who say those words own those words, not you who hear them, which is just a beautiful message. Fourth grade, Mr. Cavza read for us called How to Solve a Problem. And it's a true story that's written by a rock climber. And how she approaches that face of a mountain. And she's actually a world-renowned, honored rock climber, and she's a child. And there's a TED Talk where she talks about how she tries to figure this out. But she approaches it, and if you fall, you can get back up. And it's kind of life lessons that as you see things, it's a problem, but you have to think about how you can solve it. Fifth grade, we asked Mr. Crowley to read that. So that all of the students, because it's such a crazy year, and I don't know how much our fifth graders will be able to visit Jackie Hall to see, I wanted them to all have a face with the name of the principal at Jackie Hall. So Mr. Crowley is reading a book called A Computer Named Catherine, which if you've seen the movie Hidden Figures, it's Catherine the Computer. And it's telling her story in a picture book. And how, you know, you can be anything you want to be if you continue to work hard. So the message of all of our books are all in that piece of hope and working together and community building. Especially in the year that we've had, we decided that that was kind of the way that we needed to go this year. So we've asked teachers if they can at 9:30, which was about the time that we used to do Celebration of Reading, if they could show the videos. And then at some point during the day, also show that kindergarten one from the Rotary, or write together if they can. And then I've asked them to share with me some pictures because Bill Bitar, who does such a great job supporting the public schools, asked if we could share an article. He'd be glad to put it in. So I'm going to work on getting him something to share how we're doing. It's just a little different this year. But at least we're still being able to continue on the tradition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, is Alan still on? Paul, thank you very much. I put in, at all of your spots, a kind of a running list here that I've asked Alan to kind of go over. I know the next two items on the agenda are just quick updates on questions that were asked at the last meeting. And in Ron's absence, I asked Alan if he could kind of walk us through this spreadsheet. And I know he has some other information to share with us in terms of looking at the fee structure and whatnot to, for us to continue to address our, the deficit. So this is kind of a running deficit that we have in our food services. Alan, are you there?
Yeah.
Great.
Can you hear me, Joe?
Yep, I can hear you.
Can everyone? Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so I believe, Joe, I can't see you there, but I believe Joe has provided a spreadsheet that I provided to Hammeroyers Day.
Yes.
And while I know that Joe had given a, an update on the January numbers, there's been a couple amendments to that subsequent to that board meeting. I wanted to address that this evening. A couple of the changes are, one, he, I had given Joe an erroneous number for the deficit for January. That was my fault. I apologize, Joe, for that. Of $7,200, it was actually $12,304.62. And he also reported out a running deficit of, I believe it was $156. That was correct. However, in putting this together and taking a look at the number of meals that we served in January, which was $28,703, I decided, and I've been holding off on the amendment for the NSLP schools because I really wanted to see if meal counts came in, in terms of that 64 cents per meal structure that I originally proposed earlier in the year. I just feel that that's too high. I felt that that was too high. So I reduced your fee structure from 64 cents a meal to 50 cents a meal. And now, of course, we retroacted at the beginning of the year. And that change of the deficit from that $156 that Joe had mentioned a couple weeks ago to the $147,773 that you see in front of you. The only other piece that's not included in this, we have talked a couple of times about COVID-related paper costs and pulling that number out and invoicing the grant, the CARES grant. That's actually going to happen in February. I don't want to put that in here yet because it hasn't happened through January, but that was confirmed yesterday that it'll happen. In the February operating statement, that'll come out later this week. So I don't have February numbers yet, but I will in a couple days. And that $14,001, I believe it's $165, will be pulled out, like I said, in February. So if you really wanted to take a look at that, you know, the $147,773, 62 deficit year to date, I mean, you could really subtract the $14,000 from that. So it's about $133 and change deficit year to date. So I just wanted to give you an update and amendment to one, an erroneous number that I gave to Joe a couple weeks ago. And also to let you know that the initial fee structure, the relief of 64 cents a meal versus our fixed fees, I just feel is, is going to be too high. And so I've reduced that to 50 cents, again, to hope to reduce a little bit of the burden going forward for the rest of the year.
Okay, I have a question.
Donna has a question, huh?
How many meals do we need to serve a month that's going to wipe out, you know, the monthly deficits?
So my hope is, Donna, and again, I'll have, and I told Joe I'll have these, so they get the numbers out. I don't have the exact number. I can calculate that for you. Pardon me. I have a dog in the background. But I believe February is going to be profitable. I don't know if you can calculate it yet. $28,703, my guess is that's going to be, you know, you get in the low 30s in terms of meal count. And that'll, that'll bring it to a, to a net net position.
Okay.
But I'll have that. I'll have, and Donna, I can relay you too as well on Wednesday. We'll have preliminary directional numbers for February, so you know where we stand.
If February, Alan, should be a little bit better month than January because you were out the first week of January.
February should be, February should be profitable. As I mentioned to Joe, January is what I would call transition month. You know, the breakfast piece started later in the month. Instead of February, we have full run rate. And I totally expect to be profitable through the month of February. By how much, I'm not certain yet. But I certainly think the meal counts, combined with the lower fee structure that I've been up by going forward, I think that'll, that'll help to drive some profitability back into the program in February, which for a lot of school districts is an elusive number to find these days. But I think we're going to get there.
Does anybody else have questions? Nick?
So when you say we're going to get there, I mean, is there, is there a non-zero probability that we're going to be able to wipe out this whole thing by the end of our fiscal year? Or is the, is the CARES Act going to take care of some of this deficit? I'm a little confused where the CARES Act comes in.
Could you hear the question?
No, I didn't hear. If you could repeat the question, I'd appreciate it. Joe, you'll have to repeat, you'll have to, you'll have to repeat it.
Okay.
I really don't want to break in here.
Do you understand what he said?
Nah, part of it.
So Nick is asking about, is there going to be enough profitability between now and that being, starting in February till the end of the year, that will completely eradicate the deficit that we currently have? And would there be more, another opportunity to put more money to the CARES Act? Because he's unclear about that. Anything else that I didn't miss?
Well, I think, yeah, so, so a couple of things. I'll answer a couple ways. Really, I have, we've always, traditionally, March, April, and May have always been the most revenue, if you will, rich month of the year. So because we don't have a lot of holidays, I know we'll have a night break. But typically, we don't have weather interruptions. We have a long month in March. We have a long month in May. So, so Nick, the hope is, the hope is yes, but I can't guarantee it at this point. And really, honestly, I'm anticipating with great, I'm really looking forward to, looking forward to Wednesday's number, Wednesday's numbers for February. So it's going to give me a much better idea as to, because it's really the first real run rate we've had with, with all the levers pulled. So the intent is to get to that place. And I'll have a better idea by the middle of the week. It's a little more going to get there. In respect to the CARES Act, you know, we're waiting on the stimulus package that is working its way through Congress now to understand how that's going to impact food service directly. And also how it's going to impact districts directly. My hope is that all COVID-related expenses from, because that's really that number, that $14,000 runs through December. So my hope is that we'll be able to capture some more of those types of expenses as we go through the rest of this year. I've had a firm confirmation of that, but that we all anticipate that there's going to be more relief than our boss said, some of the COVID-related expenses in the program. So that'll help as well. But what that looks like, I'm not exactly sure. There is, there is other relief coming. And unfortunately, it's not going to benefit Monroe because it really takes a look at the differences in federal reimbursements from a look-back period of the 2019 spring to the 2020 spring. And because really, we have more reimbursements now this year than we did last year in Monroe because typically it's a cash business, not a reimbursement business. That piece of the stimulus package that was passed in December is not going to be applicable for Monroe. But I do think there'll be more COVID-related expense relief for the remainder of this year.
Anybody else have questions?
Thanks, Alan.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a great night.
All right, take care.
You're welcome.
Take care. I must hung up the phone. The other, just the other update. I know, I forget who asked at the, at the last meeting. I asked Ron just to run through our snow removal account. We had budgeted $40,000 in that account. We've had a pretty rough winter, but we're still trending pretty well. And hopefully, all indications are besides, I think we have a cold spell coming at us for the next couple of days. But indications for March is that it's supposed to, supposed to be a decent month. So hopefully, you know, we're done. Budgeted $40,000 in snow removal. We've spent through the 23rd, which included all of our storms, a little over $25,000. So we have 14,9, just under $15,000 left. So about 37% of the available budget in there. So I know someone had asked last time. Last piece I had under my report was just the Board of Ed self-evaluation. Terry and I were going through just old agendas. And I know, I think we kind of, there were more pressing concerns last March. So this is about the time of the year. So I'll ask Terry to send that out to everybody to fill out.
Yeah, last year, we just scrapped it because we were just like, forget it. But we're probably in a place now, as things are starting to improve, that we can go back to that.
Yeah.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Joe on anything? All right, then we're moving right along. We'll move on to old business. Up first is curriculum, second review, vote anticipated. And this is for, first, we'll do the AP statistics. And this was for the new textbook that we went and, what do you call it? Circulated, excuse me, last time. Do I have a motion to approve the AP statistics as presented? Thank you, Christine. Still have a second? Nick? Thank you. Any discussion on this? Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up to the board that College Board put out a report that the governor put out in a press release a couple weeks ago that Connecticut is the number one state in the country for proportion of students getting a three or higher on AP classes. And I think, I think that's great. I have always been a big proponent of AP classes. It's one of the things I wish I did more in high school. You know, it's a really great way to give students that college experience in high school. And it's a great way to get college credit. You know, the Board of Regents a couple years ago in Connecticut said that a three or higher will count at any Connecticut State College or university, which makes things really nice and uniform. So, you know, any of our students who go on to CSU institutions have a real leg up in being able to get this AP credit. And it really helps the college level. So, you know, keeping the, the resources fresh and making sure everything is up to date and adding courses as the budget allows, I think, is really important and ups just, you know, the river that we have in our school system.
And as a reminder, this is in the budget for next year. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. The next item is Health II that John DeGennaro had presented. Do I have a motion to approve the Health II class? Thank you. Jerry, do you have a second? Thank you, Shannon. Discussion, this is, this is the continuation of the Health, as John had talked about, because of the Duke High School graduation requirements, we need to offer this so that all the students have a full credit in Health, which is required for graduation. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item B, which is Board Professional Development.
Yeah, we are, we're going to be out of here in record time today. The, I just, really quickly, I think the conversation before, I know I talked to Alan, and I had spoken, and I talked to Darlene and Jen about one idea. I do think it would probably be more timely, you know, for our last two big meetings of the year, which probably be, you know, we'll do the one on the first of April and then the first meeting in May to do some little professional development series. And I do think, you know, based on our earlier conversation, having our folks come in and do a presentation on SEL would be really timely. So I would, I would suggest doing that in April. And then I know, you know, Alan, Darlene, and Jen, we're hoping to put together a little presentation on the referral process at the special education, which consists of, you know, reviewing grades, evaluations, rating scales, you know, all the information that needs to go into the PPT team for the, for the process for special education. So I would suggest we, we look to do that in the first meeting in May.
Yeah, that sounds good. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right, we will move on to new business. There is none, but I, did you want to just mention about how graduation, we cannot set the date and so forth again?
So, yeah, you know, last year, I was all excited when I brought forward, you know, the state gave us the flexibility to set the graduation date. But that was for districts that were in school for more than 180 days. And this year, with the state, you know, taking three days off the end of the year, and then with our, yeah, three days, and then with our three furlough days, we're only going 177 days. So we cannot establish a, a graduation... So we cannot establish a graduation date until the first meeting in April. So I know folks are starting to get the, to get, get a little antsy. You know, historically it is usually before the, well, it's before the last school day, which as of right now is that Thursday?
June 10.
June 10. So, you know, historically we have it before that, but it's, we'll set the date at the, at the April meeting for now. I know Steve Swenson sent that out to families tonight about that. And, you know, I know the other question they have is about prom, which we're, you know, hoping to get, you know, they've opened up some leniency for that. Looks like it could be like a two-part prom, one for juniors, one for seniors right now, but, you know, we'll see how, how that goes. We know is the weekend of, I think it's May 21st, we're going to have a big old tent in the, over in the top field, so hoping to give our students something.
He did send that out because as a junior parent, I did get to save the date.
So hopefully, I know it's, I know people want to make their plans for, for graduation, but we're just, we have to wait a little bit longer.
All right, anybody else? Jerry?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Thank you, Christine, all in favor?